Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen for December the 7th. How in the world is it December? And with our meeting called to order, I would like to ask the board to adopt the agenda with a few changes. We have several things to add to the consent agenda, and you have memos before you. You have to add two resignations in the Oxford Fire Department, two resignations in the Oxford Police Department, and the hiring of a full-time employee in building and grounds. And that's in addition to the two that are currently listed under the Human Resources section. Is that, are those the only changes?
Yes, ma'am. That's all I had.
Okay. Anybody, any other department head have a change? All right. So with those changes, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? I will start this mayor's report by saying that if you missed the most wonderful Christmas parade ever last night, then I am sorry for you because it was absolutely our best, our best parade ever. And our snow globe town shined. There are so many people who made this parade possible. And, you know, that includes the businesses and the organizations and teams and things across our community that spent so much time building incredible floats. I think it was the best group of floats that we have ever had. And a huge thank you to the North Central Mississippi Board of Realtors, specifically Linda Allgood, who is the director of that group, and all of the many realtors who volunteered. And there were a lot of them that volunteered. The MVP awards go, as they always do, to Jimmy Allgood and Ashley Atkinson and Lisa Chandler, who without those three, we would not have had the past 20 Christmas parades, but we for sure would not have had the one last night. So thank you to those folks. And, you know, it was so heartwarming to me to watch as, as groups went by and see how many city employees were involved. Pope and I were actually talking about this this morning. He noticed it too, watching the parade. How many city employees were driving floats, were manning different spots? And so thank you to all the city employees who stepped up to make sure that our Christmas parade was a success. And congratulations to the Shockwave Swim Team for winning the float competition. And I did not see their float. I was too far ahead of them in the line, but I understand that it had a working hot tub?
And a slide.
And a slide. So there you go. Way to go, Swim Team. Events like that parade, I think, are such a good reminder for us of what an amazing community that we live in. And carrying on the holiday spirit, there is ice skating at the pavilion. We were excited to host a city employee party on Sunday sponsored by Walk-Ons, and we appreciate their sponsorship. And we're excited to see a lot of city employees and their kids come and skate. And the skating will go on through December the 12th. Now that it's cold enough, when you fall down, you won't look like you fell in a swimming pool. So as it gets colder, it will be an even better time to go skating. But look at Visit Oxford sites and see their website and see all the different events that they have going on between now and December the 12th. One other great event that happened this last weekend, the Animal Resource Center and Kelly Briscoe hosted Paws with Claws. And people were lined up to get their pets' pictures made with Santa Claus in front of City Hall. And they raised about $500. And thank you so much to the Oxford Park Commission and to J.D. Davis. Seth, if you'll pass along to him how much we appreciated his help with that event. So that is it for my mayor's report. I'll ask the board to authorize the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on November the 16th and the recess meeting on November the 29th.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? I ask you to authorize the approval of accounts for all city departments.
I move we pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Ask you to consider the consent agenda with the additions I mentioned prior.
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? I will ask you to authorize the appointment of Bill Freeman to the Tree Board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Request approval to submit the proposed FY '22, '23 budget for Oxford University Transit to MDOT on January the 3rd, 2022. Donna?
Oh.
I'm going to go ahead.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Request permission to purchase three 24, 25-passenger ADA Starcraft buses. Donna?
We have five buses on order that we ordered in April that are with another company that can't get chassis in. The buses were supposed to be delivered this month, so that's not happening and don't know when it is. Transportation South has chassis available and I think one bus on the ground. And so we're requesting to get those. And after these buses, we will then be on a rotation, so we won't be asking every year for a lot more buses. So.
So, and so is there a price difference in what had been ordered and approved and what you're asking for now?
Yes, these are cheaper because they're not, actually this is low floor, but they're not low floor. So they are a little bit cheaper. And I'm only getting three, which I had five.
And you had five, yeah.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Request permission to accept the audit for fiscal year ended 9/30/2020. Ashley?
Yes, we have written receipt of our audit for the fiscal year ended 2020, and Brian Wallman from Frank's Frank's. Wallman, I was here to go over that.
Come on up and hit the highlights.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here with us.
Good to be here. I'll be brief. I'll go through this. I handed out copies of the full audit report, which is about 90 some odd pages this year, 99 pages, matter of fact. I'm not going to go through all that. Certainly, I did give a one-page summary. That's what I'll sort of touch on, highlights. And then if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those questions or expand on anything we need to. Page two of that report is the independent auditor's report. I will tell you again, this year it is a qualified opinion. This is the last year that we expect the report to be qualified. When I say qualified, there's one exception that keeps your report from being in full compliance or in full clean standing from a financial perspective. In the past, your utility deposits have all been reported in the electric fund, none in the water and sewer fund, even though a large portion of that liability relates to water and sewer. After this year was finalized, that situation has been corrected. Now we have an allocation of those deposits on the electric fund and the water and sewer. So this is the final year for that.
Way to go, Rob Neely. Yes. I want to thank Rob and Chastity for, for getting that taken care of.
A lot of work was done there, and, and we are proud to be able to remove that going into the 2021 year.
Tell Chastity thank you for us, too.
Absolutely.
Okay. On page four through 12 is the management's discussion and analysis. That's sort of summary information of the following 75 to 80 pages. I'm not going to go through all that, but just sort of tell you, on page 10 discusses where your sources of money come from, what expenditure categories are your largest expense categories. Just to comment, your largest expense category is public safety, which of course provides service to your citizens. As far as your governmental activities, you spend about 38% of your money on public safety. That's your largest expense category. Page 13 is the first of the financial statements. This is a statement of net position, lists all the assets owned by the city of Oxford. You'll see three columns. Governmental activities is all funds of the city other than your utility funds. They are presented in that middle column under business-type activities. You can see the total assets in the third column, both, both categories together, $293,106,289 of total assets. That number is up by $10,106,458 from the previous year. So a large increase in your total assets. Your cash reserves, you'll see the first two to three lines at the top of that page. They did increase this year as well by $2,3,812. Your investment reserve fund that was set up some years ago increased by $1,876 as well. Page 14 continues that statement of net position. Top of the page lists the liabilities that the city of Oxford is responsible for. And you'll see your total liabilities is $144,777,623. That is only an increase of $550,247 compared to the previous year. So your assets are up over $10 million. Your liabilities are only up $550,000. And the main reason for, or the reason for your increase in liabilities, your net pension liability, at the top of that page in the first category, you'll see second line from the bottom, net pension liability is $55,890,000. That's the liability that's required to be reported on your financial statements related to the unfunded portion of the public employee's retirement system. And that number increased this year by $6,685,000. So you can see if you left that out, did not consider that, because that's a liability you have very little control over, but is required to be presented, your, your liabilities would have actually decreased by about 6.1 million. At the same time, your assets are increasing by $10 million. Total net position, the bottom of that page, that's assets you own minus the liabilities you owe, $148,397. That's an increase of $11,454,000 comparison to the previous year. On page 18, dealing with revenue and expenditures, this is the governmental funds, again, all funds of the city other than your utility funds. Your total general fund revenues increased by $1,175,886. That's in that first column of numbers. Increase in the fund balance, that's your revenues over expenses. You'll see that three lines from the bottom on page 18 in the first column, $4,026,510. In the past, I've always been able to report to you that your sales tax money has been increasing each year. In the 2020 year, of course, COVID-related, your sales tax dollars did decrease by $396,979, about a 4% reduction. Okay? I looked, we've already done some preliminary work on your 21-year. Your sales tax money for 21 looks like it's up about a half a million dollars compared to the previous year. So you recovered all that you lost, plus will show a little bit of growth in the 21-year. Total sales tax and special tax dollars, that's your hotel, motel, tourism-type taxes, $13,848,000 in the 2020 year. Okay? Page 24 is a revenue and expense report for your utility funds. We do list each one of those separately, electric, water, sewer, and environmental services. Your electric fund, and again, this will be about, one, two, three, four, about six of them lines up from the bottom, income before operating transfers. Electric fund showed excess revenues over expenses, $2,058,759. Water and sewer, at first glance, looks like a really big number, $5.9 million. Environmental services, $218,122. Environmental services, the first time since you broke it out as a separate fund that has operated in the past. Dealing with your water and sewer fund, during this fiscal year, actually at the end of the previous fiscal year, you moved those operations or those employees over to your electric fund, which changed the unfunded public employee's retirement system allocation. That resulted in about a $3 million swing in pension liability that has run through these numbers. That's why water and sewer at the $5.9 million looks like a really large number. About $3 million of that is created by the adjustment related to the unfunded pension liability. Okay? Also, you got more grant money during this year and transferred less money out, accounting for that large increase. Okay? Go back to the summary page. Most of my comments from here will probably be from that summary page. On page 25 and 37 deals with your fixed assets. Note number four on page 37, dealing with fixed assets. During this fiscal year, you added $12,879,549 of property, plant, and infrastructure assets to your utility funds. The city also added, general city, governmental activities, $7,950,670. So over $20 million of new assets added to the city of Oxford's infrastructure. You only borrowed $6 million to do that. So over $14 million of that was paid for by the operations of the city. Keep in mind also, I told you at the beginning, your assets are up $10 million, your liability is only up $550,000, and you were able to add over $14 million net of infrastructure to your system. Very, very positive things to report. Page 39 through 88, or 39 and 88 deals with your long-term debt. The total long-term debt of the city of Oxford is $72,416,480. Most of that, of course, is bonds, long-term debt related to bonds payable. That balance did decrease by $2,123,874 from 2019, even though, again, you issued $6,220,000 in new debt. So you were able to pay down your debt by over $8 million gross while still increasing your assets and increasing your reserves. Page 44 through 49 deals with the pension liability. Certainly not going to read through all that, but again, that large increase in total pension liability, up to $55 million. Page 89 and 90, that deals with the federal dollars that the city of Oxford was able to receive during this fiscal year, and that number is much larger than normal. Some of that's related to COVID-type funding, most of it in your transit system. You did receive $7,870,678 of federal grant dollars during this 12-month period. Really, really large number. Of course, when you receive that much money, it requires extra audit procedures to be applied. We have applied those to your audit with no findings related to those federal programs. Page 96 is the summary auditor results. Even though we do have a few comments on internal control and compliance, there were no findings related to federal awards. And then on page 97, I'll leave those for you to review, but those are our comments related to controls and compliance. And there's four of those presented there for you. And you can see how I've sort of summarized the progress that has been made. We started performing your audit in 2013. That year, you had 12 findings, and you can see that number has been reduced each year to the current year where we have four. And we anticipate, hopefully, those will be reduced further going into the future related to removing the meter deposits issued. Again, we've been doing your audit since 2013. We truly appreciate the opportunity to serve you. It's been a great relationship for us. We look forward to continuing that in the future. And I thank Ashley and Jesse down in the city clerk's office. They're a pleasure to work with, do a great job, help us tremendously, and we appreciate the relationship we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I move we accept the audit.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ashley, and all the folks in your department for the hard work. All right. Discuss barricade removal at 400 South Lamar. Chris Carter.
Hey, good evening. Thank Lance. Do you want to come up here?
Sure.
I'm going to let you jump in there first.
Okay.
How are y'all doing?
Good, Lance. How are you?
Good. I'm Lance Forsey with Race Construction. We're the general contractor that did the renovation work on this building two and a half years ago. I don't know that Chris and I, I don't think we're in disagreement about anything, which makes it hard to talk about this. But there, there are, on this particular building, there is a section on the front where the new canopies are. It's approximately six feet tall by 65 feet wide that we took down old canopies, old brick, old columns, put up new brick, new canopies. Those canopies are tied to the brick, and the brick is tied to concrete block behind that. Now, there are two sections of brick on each side, which are about, I don't know, two and a half to three feet wide, that we didn't touch. And that show a gap from the front brick veneer to the side brick veneer. They're not laced, they're independent. That gap was there before we ever started. We have construction photos that we've provided, now provided to Chris. Now, that gap's larger today than it was, there you go, two and a half years ago, or three years ago before we started. We've had a structural engineer come and examine the building. He and I are not in agreement about his findings. But one thing that is, that is noteworthy, this gap that you see in those two bricks, in his report, he states that the canopies and the weight of the canopies don't have anything to do with that. Now, he and I, where he and I disagree is the installation of those canopies is the same installation we've done dozens of times over 35 or 40 years I've been in the business. The exact same installation. The structural engineer is not convinced that the load points on those arms that you see above the canopies is sufficient. Now, he also doesn't have, didn't have benefit of knowing that that brick is tied to the block. He didn't know that till this afternoon because we didn't have construction photos that we could provide to him. We found those, gave them to him today. Now, what he did say, regardless of that issue, so it's three things going on. There's these gaps in the brick on the side and the front that we didn't touch. There's the canopy construction. And then there's the very real issue is, regardless of all that and whatever we do to get Chris satisfied, is there an imminent danger to the public? That's, that's what we're really talking about today, anyway. Our structural engineer says it's not. I, as the contractor, am saying it's not an imminent danger. And that's why we're asking that the barricades be removed while we work something out, whatever something is with the engineer, get that to Chris for approval to get him satisfied. And it may be some additional work that has to be done. It may not. It depends on what the math says in the next 24 to 48 hours with the structural engineer. It was just now, this afternoon, we got the stuff in front of him. So that's, that's really the three issues. These corners right here are independent of what we did. What the work that we did, that's that six-foot by 65-foot section, there's no evidence whatsoever that those canopies have moved. There's no cracks in the brick. There's no movement in the coping. There's no movement in the roof membrane. There's nothing above the windows, nothing on the inside. There's no evidence whatsoever that that's moved at all. The only thing that's, may have moved is these, or grown is these gaps right here. Now, the structural engineer, independently of the canopies and whatever he thinks, and we're arguing about there, he does think, and I think it's probably smart, that we ought to put corner braces, or not braces, but corner caps on this, just a steel corner, pin that together, and you're done with it, and you don't have to worry about it again.
So you don't have a report from the engineer saying that this is 100% safe, that he would sign off on it, stamped with his stamp of approval?
No.
I think it's probably premature for us to do anything until we've got that, that letter of, you know, I don't know what you'd call it, but a letter of approval or a letter of confidence from, from the, from the structural engineer?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
In the engineer's report, he indicated three separate problems, if you will. I think they're easily remedied, and he actually gave some remedies in his report to what Lance knew could do to fix it. It's not going to be a really, really hard job.
Yeah, I mean, you could drill in, tie in, and anchor it that way.
You could through bolt it, you could add columns. That's probably one.
Columns are not a good option.
We, we cross that off.
But I think.
Let's go a different direction.
I think what we're talking about is something that's a pretty quick fix, if you can get the supplies. But it's a pretty quick fix. So I would, I would say, let's leave the barricades up for now until we get that report from the engineer and get a plan in place in the timeline of how we can get this tied back. Because if I'm looking at the picture on the left, that's not a new wall. That wall's 50, 60 years old?
Both of those walls you're looking at, both pictures are the same walls, and they're both 50 or 60 years old.
Yeah. And we don't know what, how they tied those bricks 50 or 60. And some of them, some of them I've seen that there's not tiebacks on bricks in some of these buildings in Oxford. I just know that from experience.
Right.
So I'd say let's, let's err on the side of caution. And let's just, if we can leave it like it is until we get that report, it, leave it like it is until we get that report, that stamp of approval from the structural engineer. I, that, I feel more comfortable doing it that way, and that would be my, my opinion.
And my only argument is, what we're talking about in agreeing is, may or may not be tied back, those right there, that's only that wide, that wide. Everything that we did is tied back to the CMU behind it.
And in this engineer's letter, he's not referring to that. He's saying that it needs to be. But you're saying he did not have the benefit of knowing that it already was?
Correct. He didn't know that. When we were here on the site, did that, I said it. Well, he said, well, I don't know what it is.
Right.
How do I know what it is?
Because that's one of his recommendations, is that you do that. And you're saying that's already done.
And I guess that's what I like to see is his, now that he has that construction information, does he change his opinion?
He may have an answer in the morning that's exactly the same. He may say, I've done the calculations and it still needs to be through.
If he says that it's safe before our next meeting or something, I mean, I'm fine with letting him remove the barricades, but.
Well, we can call a special meeting, certainly, if you get it. We don't want to hinder your business at all. I mean, we just have to err on the side of safety. So if you get what Jason's talking about, we'll, we'll happily call a special meeting to make a decision instead of you having to wait two days.
Can we not just make a motion to, I mean, can we not do it tonight, where if he, if he comes back, that it, they can take it down?
Now, to be honest with you, if I'd gotten a report from the engineer yesterday, and he said all is good, we probably wouldn't be here right now. We'd have gone ahead and taken the break.
Okay. Then, yeah. I mean, if you're comfortable with that, John, I'm, I'm fine with that.
That'd be great. If I can get him happy, then y'all are okay with that. We'll just let Chris handle it from here. If he gets one. If not, we'll be, see you again sometime.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be resolved before the next meeting, one way or the other.
Sure.
But I think it's going to be resolved in 48 hours.
Well, and we, and, and once it's resolved, we want you to be able to get back to business and those shops to be able to have the barricades removed. So as quickly as you can get something saying whatever the engineer's recommendation is, and if his recommendation is take the awnings down so that you can re, I mean, whatever it is. I mean, if there, if he will give a remedy or say that it's okay or what have you. But we need him to say it definitively.
Sure.
I mean, it needs to be a definitive yes or no and that kind of thing. And then we'll be glad to call a special meeting to, you know, it can just be a call-in meeting for, to, or if, if John would like to make a motion that we do that.
I don't exactly know how, should be, I would say, I make a motion that we allow Chris Carter, our building director, to, to allow, you know, to, to handle it if he gets the approval.
Okay.
I'm good with it. Second.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? So Lance, we'll just wait for you to get in touch with Chris, and we'll move quickly from there.
Appreciate it.
All right. Request permission for the chief of police and/or the mayor to sign an MOU between the Oxford Police Department and the United States Secret Service. D.C. maiden? How are you?
All right. How are you doing?
Doing good.
Thank you. This MOU is just stated between us and the Secret Service, allows officer Hodges and Baker to be able to, on their own time, be able to run phone dumps and things like that with the Secret Service, and allow them, pay them for that, for their time and expertise in doing that.
They get that request from other towns to perform these services, and so this will allow them to be reimbursed for their time from the Secret Service rather than from us.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Request permission to accept a $52,000 grant from the Department of Homeland Security as part of the 2020 grant reallocation.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We'll always take the money, shears.
Absolutely.
You have a choice, stick your arm on that one. The reading and vote, third reading and vote under proposed ordinance, submitting chapter 118, sections 19, 22, 23, and 25, and adding section 33 designated downtown pickup locations. And Mark Levy may want to come and give us a quick update on what he has found today, too. I know that he has visited with Lyft and has an update there. So, and I know that those were some of the things that the board wanted, had some questions about last time.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Yeah. So the last Rideshare group that we haven't been in touch with was Lyft. I think they knew quite a bit of business in Oxford. Finally talked to them today, and they're on board with the plan that we put in place. They were very helpful. They agreed with our three locations and. They agreed with our three locations and our area, in the downtown area, and they're flexible if we want to move location in the future or extend that geo fence, is what they call it, in encompassment of a wider area if we can. One of the things they pointed out is if somebody walks outside that geo fence, they're able to get picked up at that location. And so they kind of wanted to see how it worked in real time.
Yeah.
And if we wanted to come back later, they had no problem extending that. So they were very helpful. So we now have Uber and Lyft voluntarily on board. And what we're talking about tonight, what Matt's gonna talk about, is the ordinance applies to the local drivers.
Right. And it refers to our transportation hubs. I just wanted y'all to know that both Lyft and Uber were in on that. And will you just give a quick update on what, well, what we're doing? You've determined what the path would be. We're having a light study done, cameras investigated.
So I've talked with the utilities department about the path from the courthouse area to the locations, and we're gonna look at the street lights, the red lights, and do a light study. And we're gonna look at all the cameras, locations. And we're gonna have striping on the ground, we're gonna have signage, both for vehicular signage and pedestrian signs along that path. At least if it passes night, then we've talked about possibly doing a few weeks before students get back. And we've got Ben here from ASB who is helping us with a message with the students. So we'll be working with him over the January session if it's approved.
Wonderful.
One question about the geo fence. Do you think there's, I hate to say a hole in the fence or a spot, is there a susceptible place that somebody figured out that that geo fence, if they step across the street, that that geo fence, you know, they're still close enough? Do we need to think about going ahead and pushing that out?
As far as I can tell, all the bars that I could, or the restaurants bars that I looked at were at least a block from the edge. So, and again, obviously, safety's a big part of this, but it's also getting traffic off square. So if somebody feels like they can walk outside of that and get picked up easier, then that's certainly a help with the traffic issue.
Okay.
But it's something we probably need to look at, or at least watch in months.
Okay. Thank you.
The only place I look at, I knew what you were talking about was right there on East Jackson. I mean, right there in front of the federal building. You've got three or four restaurants right there that you literally can walk across the street and be out of the.
Your closest there would be the DHS line, which is a pay line for us.
You'd have to walk to a street.
They pretty much have to go across street, but yes, you are pretty much, everything on that west side, that's what you're gonna be looking at. So you'll go to DHS, which is on East Jackson 9th, and then also you're looking at First Baptist. That's kind of, I would say that'd kind of be your chink in your heart on that. Everywhere else is kind of pushed away more north-south. That west boundary is probably where, if we ever do revision, I think the west would be the first one we'd look at. But right now, it's pushed it so far over. If you go any further, you're kind of getting into a residential area, and then we really don't have a street that acts as a separator that helps us there. So right now, 9th, right there at First Baptist would probably be your issue, that how would that go?
And another thing to consider, this goes with the ordinance, so this would be for enforcement of taxi or vehicle for hire, pick somebody up, and in that area, then they're not obliged with the ordinance. So geo fence, it actually separated the vehicle for hire issue. We can make them the same. Right now, they're the same, but if we need to extend the geo fence.
Gotcha.
They work a little different because of the way that they're.
Yeah, and what we've said the whole time is, if it's not working, we adjust it and fix it. I mean, we're not married to this thing. We're just gonna, we're gonna get it started, and we're gonna see if it works, and if it doesn't, we'll make adjustments.
I guess the one place I'm looking at is right in front of the federal building on East Jackson. I mean, you step across the street.
But if they call from Jackson Avenue, it's gonna guide them toward the north pickup.
Right, but if they step across the street, standing on the sidewalk in front of the federal building, they can get one there and have it picked up right there.
We could probably square that off to where it follows down Jefferson 29th. Kind of incorporates, is that what you're gonna do?
That's what I'm thinking. I just, you know, that's one of the streets you're trying to keep the traffic off of. And if they're standing on the sidewalk, they can get a pickup right there.
The reality is, look, you know, arrive faster, figure the pickup.
Yeah, but anyway, you know, now's the time to just take that out.
Just take the federal building in.
Yep.
Just squared up, as you said.
Yeah, just go to Jefferson and then 9th.
That's right. All right, so this is a third reading. We've had a public hearing. We've had two previous readings. Are there any questions, or are you ready for a vote?
Will we approve?
Second.
All right. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. First reading of a proposed ordinance to establish Chapter 54 Historic Preservation, Article 1, and amending existing boundaries. Kate Kenwright.
Did we put a time in when we're gonna start this?
Well, the ordinance goes into effect in 30 days.
Okay.
And so our goal is to be ready in 30 days.
Okay.
If it's okay, I'd like to make a couple comments before Kate gets up and gives a presentation. I got you. So the work that we've been doing to update the surveys in the historic district boundaries, it's been a couple years in the making. A lot of effort on our staff, Judy, myself, Kate. But I just want to, you know, thank you all for the investment in making this possible, you know, through our budget. Also want to thank MDAH for making it possible through a CLG grant. And I do want to recognize Kate Kenwright's excellent work in coordinating with not only our consultant, but also the Mississippi Department of Archives and History through this whole process. It's, you know, it's been an arduous process of, you know, looking at surveys and dealing with consultant and trying to get everything right. And, you know, in 20-year-old-plus-old surveys, you know, it's been desperately needed. It's excellent work. I also want to recognize Leslie Rakestraw for his assistance in developing a tool that is gonna bring this information to the forefront for our people, our citizens, investors, people that are, you know, looking at purchasing properties, something that hasn't been done before, you know, for the city. It's accessible, it's at their fingertips, it's interactive. And then I want to point out that we're gonna be the only, we're the only person in the state, we might even be the only people in the region, or the only municipality in the region, that has a system similar to this. So we're gonna be a, you know, a poster child for advancement in technology, for surveys and how you communicate all that information for historic districts in the future. So I just want to point that out. And then lastly, you'll see the ordinance that's in the back. I just want to explain that briefly. We actually found that the ordinances, that there were ordinances that existed that defined historic boundaries. They were not housed anywhere in the ordinance, they were just in the ordinance books. So we have cleaned this up, and we've made it even more accessible, so that way in the future, you know exactly where the districts are, where the boundaries are. And it's in the Historic Preservation District, it makes perfect sense. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Kate, and she's gonna give me a brief update.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So what we'll be asking you to vote on, along with accepting these ordinance changes, is some boundary changes within the historic district. Everything we're doing here is to make sure that the information we have is accurate, so that was updating the surveys. And then we want to make things easier for the property owners to understand, and that's what we're hoping to clarify some things with the boundary change. And then we want to make it accessible, which is what we're doing with the map. So the boundary changes that we're proposing were recommended by our consultant that we worked with in conjunction with the Department of Archives and History. We are finding that property owners were confused because our national register districts and our local districts had different boundaries. So just to refresh you guys, the national register districts only have review or restriction by the state if there's a federal project in the area. Well, our local districts are what are the enforcement teeth in our historic districts. Like, our local districts are the reason that you go before the Preservation Commission with your projects. So essentially, the area that is under review by the Preservation Commission is not changing radically. 62 properties were removed at the recommendation of the consultant, and many of those were, like, multi-unit buildings. They're not, like, standalone, single-family homes. But what we did do was, instead of having North Lamar and Jefferson-Madison District, that's all gonna be the North Lamar District, like our national register district. And then instead of having South Lamar and Depot District, you're just gonna have the South Lamar District. And we did hold a public hearing that was advertised at our last Preservation Commission meeting, and we did not receive any comment or have any comment at the meeting. And we did send a mailing to all of the property owners who were being removed from the district, and we did not hear anything about that from any property owners. So.
It's definitely easy to read by the map.
Yeah, we're really excited about the map. We get a lot of people who think that the, they don't really understand what information we have about their property, and so this puts in their hands everything that we know. So.
For somebody that's colorblind, it's really easy to read.
I like to even search by picture, too. So like, you can look up the building by picture. So. Okay? So we don't need any action at this meeting, because we'll have to have this thing.
Well, just looking at this and thinking about all the surveys that went into it, and all the long hours of analyzing, do all these things match up? And all the time with Leslie Rakestraw to figure out a way to communicate this with the citizens, I cannot imagine how many hours you've put in on this, Kate, and we are so appreciative.
Excited to wrap it up.
Well, I know you are. You know, this has been one of our goals for four years, is figuring out how to get our arms around development in this community and how to communicate it. And you've hit a home run here, so thank you very much for your hard work. We appreciate you. All right, we'll have a second reading and public hearing at our next meeting. Request permission to accept the bid for the municipal depository for effective dates January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2025. Ashley?
Yes, the legislature changed laws where we don't have to change every two years. We can change every four years now with our municipal depository. And as I attached in Board Pack, we had three bids, and I'm requesting that we do Option 3 with Bancorp South for a variable rate, a variable interest rate, and a fixed flat fee per month service fee. That was kind of our best option. We went and analyzed our activity for October and kind of put each of the banks, took what they were offering us versus what we were doing, and the $500 flat fee is our best option.
So do we?
Second.
Did they all offer variable rates?
No, they did not. Trustmark did not.
And the fix wasn't what we wanted?
No. It was, up into perspective, we're getting 1.5% right now, they offered 0.03. So I figured with the variable, we would have some growth. The rates are gonna go up, we assume, it will give us some potential to get some higher interest instead of locking us into a really low rate for four years.
Yep. All right, so we had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I did second.
Okay.
I thought somebody else.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Request permission to accept the 2021 Ad Valorem Assessment Rule as provided by Lafayette County Tax Assessor's Office.
Yes, I did. We have gotten our file. We got it late Friday. It has been processed, so we are collecting now, but this is, the information was attached. We just need y'all's acceptance.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Consider a contract for precision engineering for professional services for the extension of sewer services to annex portions of North Lamar. Rihanna?
We are continuing with our annexation efforts to provide services, and we'd like to hire Precision to start the design for the North Lamar area.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Consider a request from WB Architects for 100% allocation of Section 179D Energy-Efficient Commercial Building Deduction for the new Oxford Fire Department Station Number Two. Mark Levy?
So we're, Burner Allen Architecture is requesting 100% allocation of an allowable tax deduction for the design of energy-efficient components in Fire Station Number Two. And I explained it in the memo. Section 179D of the Energy Policy Act allows entities to claim a taxes deduction for installing energy-efficient components like lighting and air conditioning and hot water systems. Since the city doesn't pay federal taxes, the law allows municipalities to allocate the tax deduction directly to the parties responsible for designing and preparing specifications. For the Fire Station Number Two is 4,300 square feet. The maximum allowable deduction is $1.80 per square foot, so it's around $7,740. WBA is the only design firm that has submitted a request for the allocation. They request 100%. And there's no cost or benefit to the city. You may choose to allocate the full amount to the one firm, the architecture firm, or you could split it between the subconsultants, or you could not allocate it at all. So I wanted to bring this request before y'all, and in all of our buildings, this is a possibility of how to allocate these deductions.
So we're gonna pay them?
We don't pay them.
It won't cost us.
It'll come off their, it'll come off their federal tax return.
Oh, it's a tax deduction.
No, no.
My only question was, and one thing I would like y'all to think through just quickly, is who we assign this ability for, the tax deduction for. We have in the past done it for the architect, because it is, I don't remember the exact wording, but it's for the design of energy-efficient.
That's right.
Systems, and so the architect is designing them, but there's also a mechanical engineer and, you know.
There's an electrical engineer involved.
We have kind of done it, apparently, I didn't realize we did, but we have done it in the past, first come, first served. You know, I mean, whoever requested that they received the tax deduction is who has gotten it. So just wanted to ask the board, are you comfortable with the first-come, first-served type request? Or would you want to divide, I mean, it's only $4,000, right?
Well, it.
On this project?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, on this project. So it's not like if you divide it by, you know, large group, that it's gonna be?
A third party has to come in and audit the building, and they submit a report to the.
So if we divided it up to say, all those people you just mentioned, would each one of those people have to come in and do their own?
They would all have to claim their, they would all have to claim their own deduction. And that's how.
No, no, they can claim their own deduction, but I mean, would they have to do their own audit, do their own report? Like, would they gotta spend money to come in and do that?
No, not necessarily. They'd have to get the mayor to sign. After, if it was approved that way, they'd have to bring the forms to get the, we can just allocate it.
I'm okay with doing it in just one. I just wanted to throw that out there, too.
No, I was gonna say, I'm fine with these guys taking the 100%, but I would ask, I know he's not here, but I would ask Barr to give us an idea of what he thinks is the most equitable way to do it, instead of doing the first.
It might be different for each project.
Yeah, and I'll just, I looked at the actual construction drawings, just to give you a little context. So WA did, there's 59 pages. WA did 13 of the drawings, and the mechanical engineer did eight, and the power source, which is really where a lot of this goes, did eight. You know, they did eight pages of the total project. So they, all the subconsultants that worked, they just.
They just did an act.
They just did an act.
So based on the drawing work, you're looking at like a 50-25-25?
That, that sounds about right. And the civil engineer as well, but they don't specify any of the tax-saving components.
Mayor, I think your point is a good one, but we've got to analyze this every time. We can't make a blanket finding that we'll always give it to the architect or.
It's kind of what I think, yeah.
Or else it's not a finding. That's why I was gonna say, I wanted Barr to say, this is the way I do it in the future. You give this much here, this much here, this much here.
I think it has to be based on the work done. I mean, I think the way Mark looked at it's perfect.
Well, then they just need to tell us each project.
This came up on the garage.
And your other two might not even look at it and go, we're going to, we're not going to mess with it for $1,000.
Yeah, and the garage, did they do, did you say?
There were lights, there were some lights in there, yeah.
Oh, I forgot about the lights.
And it's paid per square foot, John, so it was actually a really big one. But that, I mean, to me, it needs to be, we need to look at each project so that we know that we are equitably distributing.
And also, and I don't know, I don't know if you can do this, but on future projects, I would like to see if we can get some of this back from the, in the contract, on the design contract on the front, and see if we can.
Although a $4,000 tax deduction, you can't get that much back.
Well, and Barr also says, Barr also says that on all previous projects, we've only ever had one person ask, so we never had to decide who to divide it.
That's what I was about to say, so what do we do? Let's just say that we have a deal now, we're, we're going to let Barr or Mark or somebody come back and say, this is the way it ought to be divided up, but what if the other two people don't ever ask?
And they, you don't ever call them.
I think they get it anyway. I think the federal law is, you give it to those who provided the savings, or you can. Yeah, but if they don't file it on their taxes.
If they don't file it with their architect, I mean, with their accountants.
Yeah, because a third party's the one doing.
I make a motion to allow it to WBA 100%.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Consider change order number one from Field Turf USA for additional contract days.
This is a time-only change order, doesn't affect any events, it didn't trade part, and does not affect the price.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Consider lease agreements MSCI 233 and MSCI 234 with Pioneer Lines, Mississippi Central Railroad, for pipeline crossings. Rob?
Hi, good evening. I received a couple letters from Pioneer Lines, who's doing the billing and the coordination for the Mississippi Central Railroad Company. We've got two water lines crossing, they're right away, and they've sent us a lease agreement. It's modified from the old agreement. I don't have a copy of the old agreement, but they've sent us this agreement to update and move forward starting January 1st. Annual fee for the pipeline crossing of 650 for one of the crossings, and I believe it's 550 for the other, and so just.
Unless we're moving all of our lines, we don't have a choice.
Yeah, these have been in place for the last 20 years.
Just so you know, before anybody has any big opinions on it. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Considering MOU with the Mississippi Attorney General for opioid litigation. Pope?
I think we received this letter right before the last meeting or so.
We did.
And Barr has today talked to Jonathan Comprado, who's one of the attorneys for the Attorney General, representing the state.